So we can have this available at a later date for those who can't join us. My name is Aaron Logan Allen. I'm the AMAS Senior Transportation Planner. I helped with the TIP criteria development and I'm also filling in for Craig, my boss's. He's out of town right now. So I apologize for being late. I was in another meeting. So today is the CAC's work session to go over the TIP criteria that were recently released for a 60-day public comment period. So I'll give you a quick little overview of what we're gonna do. I'm gonna do a brief explanation of what the criteria are and what they do for us. So you can have a kind of understanding of kind of why we're doing what we're doing and how it relates to other things that AMAS does or what you guys will see as the CAC. And then I'm gonna go through kind of an overview of some changes we made, some general changes to the criteria, like for example, the max points possible, why we did, why things are broken out the way that they are and stuff. Give you kind of a good basis for that when you see the points. And then my plan was to just go through each individual criteria category and then criteria. Talk about what we added in there, why we added it in there, how the point system works. This is kind of a free-flow group meeting, so if you guys have questions, please just signal or something and we can talk. And this is really a chance for you guys to get your comments out and be like, "This doesn't make sense," or "What about this?" and you know, and stuff like that. So we can actually have a good, robust discussion. Just for clarification, the 60-day period that we have right now is the chance to comment. It will, unless something drastic changes from the policy committee side, it will not be going back out to the public. It won't be going back to the committees. This is our chance now to provide comments and make changes. Just so everyone's clear and kind of with the process, if you don't leave. September 20th, sorry. It's a 60-day comment period, so it was extended. The policy committee released it for 60 instead of 30 days to give the community councils more time to provide their comments. So, any questions before we begin? Yes?
I have like a broader, you know, beyond the tip question, but still, you know, projectists' boards, they're ranked and they go into them and they're funded. But what if you're scored, you know, say in one area and then the concept of project change, like the score sidewalks might go out and be a complete street thing, like what kind of, I don't know, and this may not kind of address this, but like this, don't kind of understand how the scoring will follow the same project.
I can kind of explain that. I think maybe my overview of kind of how this all fits together might help with that, but if it doesn't kind of remind me and I can try and talk about that, especially about like project scope changes and stuff like that, that, you know, in general, we try and keep that to a minimum because it can cause a pretty big disruption to project development. So the point of the criteria is to get that information in as quickly, you know, as robust as possible in the initial scope that you put into the TIP. So then that information is available when they start the design. So you can be like, okay, we need this and stuff. Yeah, I'll, I can get into the relationship between the MTP and the TIP and kind of talk about that as well. So, okay, let's go ahead and get started. So, TIP criteria. This is linked to so many things, it's not even funny. So what happens with the TIP criteria? Well, what is the TIP? The TIP is our transportation improvement program. It is the four-year funding program that AMAS uses. So AMAS gets an allocation of federal dollars that goes from the feds to DOT to us. Just so everyone knows, all federal dollars that we deal with go in that order, from FHWA or some federal agency through DOT, because DOT is kind of the steward of all federal dollars. And then it comes to us. So when it comes to us, we, AMAS, so when I say "we," please don't, it's not "we" as staff, it's "we" as AMAS, everyone. Policy Committee, CAC, Policy Committee has final say, but I'm just using "we" as a general for all of it. We, I'll go with that. We have a requirement to allocate that funding towards the project. So right now, AMAS gets about 30 million a year in funding that it can use for TIP. Now, that fluctuates from year to year, so please, so you know, that's not gonna be perpetuity, that we will always have 30 million. We have some requirements that we have to spend that money on, like we have to focus on pavement, we have to focus on, you know, some roadway, we have non-motorized, we have congestion mitigation, air quality. These are different requirements. So how do we select projects to put into the TIP? Well, that's the TIP criteria. So it may seem like a dub, but I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page here. The criteria is used as a way to get a whole list of projects from our project nomination. And these are, what we're really gonna strive for this TIP go-around is every project needs to have a nomination. In the past, we've drawn from the CIP lists, from a community council, the surveys that they put out there and everything, and we just kind of randomly get them things and put it in. But we wanna make sure everything has a nomination that's go-around. So the nomination helps explain the purpose of the project, what it's, you know, gonna be helping to do, any things that we need to know, like sidewalks, there's safety compare and that kind of stuff. So we take that information and we use the criteria to help analyze projects if they're helping to meet our goals and objectives and performance measures that we have in the MTP. So, take a step back. MTP, it's our 20-year-long range plan. It's our overarching direction that we as AMAS wanna head in. And it has goals and objectives and performance measures. And so when we're doing our plans and projects, we wanna make sure that we're helping to achieve those goals and objectives. MTP projects are more broad. That's why they tend to only have a sentence or two, because they have to be more all-encompassing, because when we do the MTP, we don't really know everything about a project, what it can do, the concerns in the area. It's so high level, it's still a pretty broad concept. When we get to the TIP, we have to be a lot more focused, because it's actually gonna be receiving funding and constructed or planned. The MTP is just a plan of, this is what we hope to get done in the next four years. Where the TIP is, this is what we will do in the next four years and we have the funding for it now. Yes?
So you've mentioned something huge for me is every project needs to have a nomination for every single TIP. So no, so this means, I mean, it sounds straightforward, but if a community council has a project that they've been put forth every time, it doesn't matter. Every four years, that project needs to be submitted at least once, or does it need to be submitted annually?
Well, I don't know about future tips, but this particular one, if somebody wants a project scored, it needs to have a nomination.
Gotcha. And how do you do the nomination? Are you gonna go into that?
Not really today. We still have to work that out, because we build the nominations based on the criteria. Because what we wanna do is trying to build a nomination that we put out there and members of the public have an easy time to be able to fill out. You know, I associate as part of our criteria, there's a lot of technical kind of stuff in here. So we're gonna have to sit down as internal staff and figure out, okay, what are we asking the public to provide to us?
You're gonna make a template.
Yeah, that can help. So we'll have some kind of form that criteria will help with, where people can go online and they could go into each section that we'll lay out that'll probably relate to the criteria you see here. So for safety, you know, is there a safety problem in this area? Or safety, identify safety. Is there data that you have available? It's gonna be hard for a lot of people to find the data, so we're not gonna be like, "You didn't provide the data." We're not storing that. That'll probably fall on staff having to find. But we want people to see what we're doing to score these projects, so they're like, "Okay, you are gonna be using data to do this." That's the awesome workout, but we will put out a nomination form. We will put out a nomination time period. I don't know how long that'll be. Generally, it's 30 days, but it may be longer depending on what the policy committee wants. I will note real quickly, we do have a time constraint to get the TIP done. Our current TIP ends next year at the end of September. So we have a, we do have a time period. So I'd love to do 100 days of project nominations, but we're gonna probably have to crunch it down to something. I don't know yet.
All the community councils are always told every year to submit their list of CIP projects, and I'm assuming that would overlap with nominations. Have you looked into scheduling if that nomination period for CIP would line up with the nomination process?
No, we don't typically get too involved in that and we can't really delay or wait or we're just gonna have to go forward as best we can. If it happens to line up, awesome. We'd love to get it to line up to make it easier for people. We'll see, we can talk and see when that is and see if we can.
Clarify some messaging, that we tell the community councils, "You need to submit a nomination" versus using the CIP program.
Yeah, like, right, and it sounds like the CIP nomination showed up instead of, you know.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's good because the community CIP, but it's very small.
For us, the reason we're gonna be, I'm trying to push to be a little more strict about making sure that we have a nomination for every project is because we do get comments as projects are developed. Well, how did this come about? What was the intent for this project? Because, you know, years pass between when a project gets nominated and funded and when it actually starts getting worked on. And so it can change hands, we've worked on it and stuff. And so we want a good historical record of why this project was nominated. For the most part, we do for past tips, but a good example is we have the MTP project. Historically, what we've done is we've just taken all the MTP projects in the short term and scored and ranked every single one of them without a nomination form. And so that's become an issue of, well, wait a minute, how did this? So we have to go back to the first MTP nomination form and repaying for staff. So even if we do all the short-term MTP projects, staff will have to go through and do a nomination form for every project. So it's a lot of work, but I think it's better for everyone because it's a lot more transparent in the long run for everyone, because they can see kind of how the project came about, you know, how it was originally, what data was originally used to help score. So I'm sorry, that's a lot, kind of not just the criteria stuff, but it's all interlinked. So I hope people get a better understanding of what the criteria do and why they're kind of important and why they may be the way that they are. Any questions so far? Okay, so this criteria is a little different from past criterias for a lot of things. I think this go-around, somebody wanting to speak, okay. So this go-around, we wanted to do a couple of things, make it a little easier for people to follow along, because past criteria have been a little more difficult to follow, how the scoring works and everything like that. We wanted to try and make it easier. I don't know if we did that, but I hope. One thing we did is we set a maximum possible points for any project and we set it at 100. My rationale for doing that, because I really push this, is it's easier for people to see how a project scores when it's a hundred divisible by a hundred. Because when you see something gets an 80, you know exactly kind of what that means in your head. That's a beat. Okay, it did okay. Because before it was like, "Project scored 234." Well, what does that mean? It was not intuitive in any way, shape or form. So we set it for 100. And as you can see on the screen before you, we have these categories, safety, mobility, economic, environment and preservation. I'll go in more detail later. Let's just show you what they are. Those are the categories and each category has a number of criteria underneath. And what I've shown here is what are the max possible points for each category that a project can receive. As you can see, we've divided it evenly amongst each category. Originally, we did have it split out where safety was receiving the most points and the problem came when we started thinking about it based on a comment that one of our CAC members made of, "Well, how did you decide how to break it out this way?" And I'm like, you know, it doesn't actually make any sense for us as staff to be the ones making the decision that this category should be receiving more points than that category. That should really come from the public, our committees, you know, the subcommittees, you guys, the CAC or the policy. They should be the ones making the decision that this one is more important. We wanna put more points into this one. Because our goals and objectives in the MTP are not weighted, they're not ranked. For us, they're all equal. You'll see that there's one is this, two is this. That's just because we needed the number in the system forum. So just a heads up. And also, I'll kind of get to this a little more later, the federal things we have to meet, the federal national goals and planning factors are also not ranked and scored and weighted. They don't say, "This is the number one, number two." So we're trying to just say, "Let's make it even for now." And then if we hear comments from the public saying, "This one should be receiving more points than another one," then that's a discussion we can have then. Yes?
Overall ratios for the previous structure now to this structure, were they equal to a, right now you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, a 20% market share for each one of these? Was the old format a 20% market share for each one of these?
I don't know.
Okay.
And to me, it doesn't really matter, because we're moving on to a new criteria. This criteria is so different from the last criteria. I really want to get away from that old criteria because I think that it raised a lot of concerns that people had and I really want us to just, that's how we used to do it. We need to get into the new stuff and figure out if that just works for us.
So the reason I would ask this comment is this could be a drastic change right there. If you had mobility and economic that now at 40% of market share previously was 50%, I care more about who, what justification you have to make each one of these as an equitable item?
My response is, why wouldn't?
Because some things could be more important than others. Just because five people out of 100 think something's important doesn't make it equivalent to that, to equal 20%.
Well, that's the discussion right now with this criteria. What was done in the last criteria was a totally different legislation from the federal government for what their priorities were. This version here is more in line with the current priorities in the legislation. So I like to move on because stuff changes every few years. And when we get mired in the past, we thought, well, why did somebody do that? I don't know why they did that in the past. I wasn't around and it was a different thinking. But if you don't think that these should be equal, then that's a discussion that needs to happen of, "Why don't you think they are equal?" I think they should be equal because all of these are justifiably important in their own right. There's not a single category here that I'd say is more important than another, because all relate to each other in every way, shape or form. That's one thing I want everyone to keep in mind. When you look at an individual criteria, you cannot judge everything based on that one criteria, because it's only one criteria. For example, we had the FAC meeting yesterday and an individual's like, "Well, you're giving more points to a project that improves bikes." Yeah, but you're only looking at that one criteria. It could do really well on this bike criteria, but it could do really poorly on every other criteria and the project overall would not do well. Because the point that we're trying to achieve here is that we are a multimodal system and we're supposed to be addressing that in our criteria. And when we say, "This one is more important than another one," it falls to negatively impacting that idea of multimodal mobility, that all modes matter, regardless of the percentages in our mode sheet. And that's what we're trying to get through here.
But all modes matter is not an equitable share. So if a smaller group right there uses, I mean, the whole idea of what you're saying is representing that smaller group. I don't know if I'm saying that right.
Well, to me, I kind of get what you're meaning, is that are we disproportionately spending money on a group that is a small percentage of the overall sheet? And my saying, my thing is, that doesn't really matter. The whole point is that we're supposed to be allowing this for everyone to be able to equitably use it. Because my pushback is that when you sit there and talk about things like non-motorized users, they typically represent large portions of underutilized populations, EJ populations. So they may be a small percentage, but they're some of our most vulnerable populations. And so I think it's important that they get an equal representation at the table when we're doing our criteria for it, even if it means that we're spending more money on projects that are seen as less than others. They shouldn't be seen as less. They should be seen as just as important as everything else.
Does this change the percentage ratio from confined pedestrian to roadway max?
I think no, because of how we have it split out, because we have separate projects in here. Sorry, I should have mentioned in the beginning. AMAS has policies in place for how its spending is allocated. So that 30 million has percentages that we put towards things. Right now, roadway is the highest percentage at 55 to 65%. Non-motorized is 10 to 15%. Ingestion mitigation is 10% and pavement is 15, 20%.
We have a few people with their hands up.
Okay. So that, you know, that helps drive kind of what our idea is between some of this. So we do have a thing in the MTP to look at those percentages and see if the funding should be shipped, you know, more equitable between them, but that is a discussion that the committees will have to have.
Because all the policy has been said.
Yeah. So I think, yes, we have some questions online.
Sure, two people with their hands up. James Starzak can go first and then Jim Emerson.
Okay, James.
James, we don't hear you if you're speaking. It doesn't, it doesn't say muted.
Will Mr. Starzak, while he gets his machine working, my comment was, the last person speaking is actually spot-on and one of the purposes for having this meeting to begin with is we're supposed to be discussing, do we think the distribution of 20 points evenly spread is in fact the right final point distribution or not? And ultimately, the policy committee is going to decide if spreading those points equally at 20 points apiece or multiplying safety by times two or times three, because that's, we think that's more important or more importantly, because the policy committee is making the policy decision to make that more important would then be one of the final steps in this process. So that, that whole discussion that just happened is spot-on on what we need to also include in this discussion. You know, Aaron's right. The initial position is we're balancing them equally, but that's one of those assumptions that we're supposed to be providing input and thoughts on. And if that assumption isn't a good one, then we should be recommending what the change should be as this goes forward to the policy committee for final decisions. That's all I had, Aaron. Thanks.
Please don't think me discussing, I'm very passionate about what I do. So please don't think it's me being like, "You're stupid, you're wrong." I want this discussion because it's important for us to talk about this, because I think in the past, people have been so afraid to have this honest, open discussion about, "Are we sure this is really how it should be? Well, what about this? What about, you know, this is that way?" Like.
Come on, Aaron, you've told me I'm stupid and wrong more than once. It wouldn't be the first time.
You're not in this case, Jim.
I want a clarification. So when we previously spoke, and my understanding was the purpose of this meeting was for understanding of this process, but not necessarily giving our comments. And my understanding, this is also documenting our comments right now, or is our?
No, sorry. This is just discussion.
This is just discussion.
So that's why we'll have a robust discussion. We are not recording. We're recording when we need to, I say it's safe in case we need to follow up on anything. There's not public testimony, it's not captured into the record, anything like that. So we will have a follow-up statement when we get back to comments. It's a work session, yeah. So, James, are you, are you available?
If Mike isn't working, he said his comments were similar to Jim's, like he typed something.
Okay.
I meant to finish.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you, James, for reiterating that point about this is why we're doing this stuff. Okay, we do only have about an hour and a half left, so I wanna kind of move on. Thank you for your comments. Any other questions or comments about the point? The overall points. So we're gonna move on to, really quickly, is kind of how the point's broken down per, oh, the number of categories, the number of criteria per category. So I wanted to.
I'll read you if you did type something in chat.
Oh, okay. Yeah, James.
The relative category scores indicate the priorities of AMAS and emphasizing safety over mobility or whatever is very relevant.
Okay, and that's up to the policy committee ultimately to make the decision on. So as I said, I, you know, I'm just staff. I'm a nobody. So it's not really up to me to make the decision on how the points are broken down. Because we originally did have the safety as the highest scoring one, but it felt awkward when people were like, "Why did you select that? Why did you give more points to that?" I'm like, "We tried to make it equal as possible." Yeah, see, so just trying to be neutral part of here, make it equal and then you guys provide your comments on that and then the policy committee will decide.
Well, I think your comment too about the funding, I know, here is in, in, for the highest.
Yeah.
To reiterate on that, Jim just typed in the chat and if individuals think the relative weighting should be adjusted, that is a comment that should be submitted to the staff and policy committee to consider.
Yes. And so just so people know, this is the CAC work session, so this is not a everyone under the sun. This was intended for everyone under the sun to get their comments into us at this point. That's not what this is for. This is just a work session to discuss. If you wanna submit your comments, you need to do that either as a CAC group decision that you make or as individuals. Same with people listening online, they will need to submit it either as part of their group or as an individual. So, yes?
The one we have up right now, the overall categories, every other of the categories sums up to the same number for criteria for roadway, criteria for bike paths, except for the overall. Is there a reason for that?
What do you mean?
If you add up criteria roadway, that's 25. You add up criteria bike path, it's 24.
I think it was more of just us actually coming up with the criteria within the category.
All the other ones are equal. I wonder why that single one was different.
So this is explaining how many criteria are within each category. And I think it came down to, we just ran out of ideas, what to put in for the criteria. So if we go through and you're like, "You're missing, this is a criteria." Perfect, because we can, you know, this is just to show you, they're relatively equal. There is a little bit of a difference, but that's because there's a nuance between all the different categories, so.
Well, I thought that every other one is exactly equal all the way down, except for that one.
Surprise, we're trying to.
I'm listening here, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go through the max points possible for each criteria as we go through the criteria itself. So if you guys don't mind, I'd like to move on to the criteria.
True.
So the first one we have is safety. Pretty self-explanatory here what safety is. We do have a little blurb here about what the projects are helping us to do. You know, reducing serious injuries and fatalities, promote a safe and accessible pedestrian environment and approve emergency response. So those are the key things here. We could actually probably expand upon that, but. Please want to let you know, the order that the criteria show up on here does not mean that we think that is the most important. It was just, that was the first one we worked on and we moved on to the next one. So first one we have is improved truck-related safety issues. This was just trying to identify the importance of freight in our system and that freight safety is as important as other modes. So in here, we talk about, oh, let me explain how the criteria works. So if you have a project, you have two columns here. Depending on the project, it will depend on which column you use. So if you have a roadway project, you will use the first major column, this is complete streets, major infrastructure corridor. So you only use that column to score a project. If you have a bicycle or pedestrian-specific project, for example, you're wanting to put a pathway in somewhere. That's just, that's the primary purpose of the project, to put a pathway in a location. You would use the column as a bicycle and pedestrian. We have the same criteria regardless of project, but they're scored differently based on the project itself, because they do kind of different things. They have different purposes and needs. Yes?
What if the project does both?
Well, so the only case that would be is generally a roadway project that can do both and would score as a roadway project. And we've actually built into the criteria the possibility of giving projects points based on the non-motorized improvements that they do. Because as Jim and others at DOT do know, often it's overlooked the benefits that a roadway project can provide to multiple modes. You know, a roadway project can do a real good job at providing non-motorized improvements and that often gets lost, I mean, the scoring of the project, you know, the talking of the project. It's just, well, you're just doing roadway. Yeah, but look at all these other things we did that were just as important and provided huge benefit to everyone. We wanted to get that out there for people to be able to just, okay, it's not a bad thing to do a roadway project, as long as it meets all of these kind of ideas that we have about what a roadway project should be. That was the idea of the hunt, so. And I hope that came across in our criteria. We'll see.
We have Jonathan Lang, if you wanna speak, you can speak now.
I was just looking for, is there a link for those of us at home to look at the document other than what you've got up on the screen?
Yeah.
Yes, it's on our homepage, but I can put it in the chat.
Yes, Christine's gonna work on putting, can you put the criteria and the handbook as well?
Sure.
Christine is gonna be working on putting a link into the chat for that. Thank you, Crystal. Did you have anything else, Jonathan?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Excuse me, these are pretty obvious for me. It's a truck safety issue. So if the project has a truck-related safety issue, what you wanna be able to do is talk about what that issue is and how the project's gonna help to address it. For the safety, one of the things we really wanted to focus on is the idea of countermeasures. Because in the past, when projects came forward, it was, oh, we're identifying the safety issue. It's like, well, how were you, how were you addressing the safety issue? And it was always kind of hard to put that in words until we got further along in the process. So our goal here is to use the nationwide standard, not standard, but the nationwide idea of countermeasures. They're used in various other things, not just us coming up with this term, countermeasures. There are actually different categories. So you have the strategic highlight. They're actually different categories. So you have the Strategic Hylia Safety Plan. DOT has countermeasures in it. HSIP, the Highway Safety Improvement Program, has countermeasures. FHWA has a whole clearinghouse of safety countermeasures that we use. Comes from a variety of sources that we list in the bottom here. And I will note, we do have a lot of acronyms in here. It was pointed out to us at the FAC, we need to have an acronym list, so that is an update along with. Mike mentioned about the link to the Freight Mobility Study. We'll probably put links to the clearinghouse. The HSIP, all that kind of stuff, so people can go there and find out what it is. We talked about like VMT, for example, I found a really good article from Texas A&amp;M that talked about what VMT is, that gives like a brief explanation of it, so it gives a lot of traffic, so people can know what it is. So that kind of stuff we're working on. So if you notice the things, please point them out. I may be a little bit of a rude person when I comment on them, but the intent is good, so thank you very much.
So.
Yes.
Kind of write some stuff down. So like those countermeasures or anything that's like those, like. It would be good to have like a resources list that goes along with it too, so that people can, you know, click and.
That's, that's what I was just mentioning about it, is that when we, we list later on ASCHO. NACTO, these other different things, we'll put a link to there, and those will be linked to the countermeasure location that people can find. Like the countermeasuring clearinghouse, so people can go and kind of see what it is. I will warn you, it's a lot. So please don't think it's, I will be able to see, there is a lot there, because the big thing about the countermeasures is you have to be able to identify what the issue is. Because there's so many countermeasures, if you just want to look through a whole list of them, it'll take you days to do that. So you have to be able to say, okay, there's X problem, issue there. Let's put it into the search bar and see what kind of countermeasure plays along. Yes.
So on the bonus points, so I see you use the or, and so either the first, probably the plus three, plus two, plus zero. Or if there's no documented crash data, then the plus one right there. And I'm assuming the bonus is excluded from the or, that the bonus could be in conjunction with. The top criteria. So my question comes to is if it met the first criteria, second, you have five points and you have a bonus. Can you go over the five-point ratio? So no matter what, your max, doesn't matter, it's five.
Couple of things there. One, max points possible that you see on the screen here in these columns, that is the max point a project can get here.
No matter what.
For this criteria, no matter what. And two, the bonus can apply to either. We're going to try and edit the criteria to better.
Separate.
Space out the bonus as its own little box.
Gotcha.
I've done this already, but I didn't want to bring it out for people because I'm still testing it out. So here's how it works. You have a project that comes in and says, we have a truck-related safety issue here, so you will either use the top portion, three, two, or zero. If it meets that, if it doesn't meet any of that. Or it's like. Then you say, okay, it doesn't meet any of those, but it might meet the or section. Because we recognize for safety, safety is really the only one that does this or thing. Because we recognize that there are areas where there may not be any crash data, but there's a concern either from the public. You know, freight, for example, the freight communities identified certain areas that don't have data, but their drivers have a concern there. And so like, we want to be able to address that. You know, a project could come in and. Not really have the data, but we still want to show, it's a good project that should be worked on, that's identifying that there's a concern. And so you would either do the top three, depending on what it is, or you would go to the one. If people would like to see that one for the no-crash data increase, that is a comment we would like to hear from people. We just went for one. Because we're recognizing that areas of data are already identified as some of our most important areas. They have data there, and if they're saying there's a massive data or there's a massive crash rate there. Typically, that is our area of focus. Is we go where there's some of the highest possible, because that is our immediate. So there is a disparity in points in between those, because you're like, well, if it has no data, then it only gets one point, but a bonus, so it could get two points max. I'm like. Yeah, but it's weird to say that it should get the same amount of points as an area that has a lot of data that's showing an immediate there. Because everything we do is very data-driven.
What's the zero? Why would you score a zero?
Because you have lower no-safety countermeasures. So that's to identify projects that come and say, there's a problem, but there's no actual countermeasure that's been identified as part of the project. Or there's not a countermeasure that we can really do, that kind of stuff. Because if we didn't have the zero in there, then we basically say, would every project get a score? So this is the identified, there may be locations that have data, not as much data somewhere else. Or they have a lot of data, but the project doesn't have good countermeasures in there. It's trying to identify that thing of, is this project actually helping to address the concerns or this related issue that are being talked about? Yes.
So, hi, I'm having a little bit of safety.
Yes.
So when you do the three and the two. Is it intersecting with the crafts that are?
Yeah.
It's not just the old intersection, it's the, and the last one says it's on a.
That's just bonus.
Why that all the other points are?
We're giving bonus points if it happens to be one of our designated brake routes, which they're a limited set. I apologize, we didn't have that available, but for example, KMC or this big brake route, Tudor, Maldune. If it doesn't on there, we're saying it should get extra points. Because it's actually targeting a location that is freight-specific, it's truck-specific.
But the other, like if you're scoring the first two criteria. I'm still a little, you're saying that there's crap being done that's.
Yes.
Crash related.
Yes.
You might want to put the word truck.
That's in the criteria itself. This is only for truck-related issues. We do have one for vehicular and non-motorized that we'll get to here in a second. So we could go in there and say. We're trying to keep it generic because that's how the data is for us in terms of, we're just talking about crash rate here for trucks, but okay, we'll look at.
You know what I mean? I didn't see the word truck in the middle, so I was confused about whether it was really.
Hold on a second.
While you're doing that, Jonathan Lang has his hand up. You can speak, Jonathan.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, is there a place in here for identified need? It seems like this is really very data-driven, like saying crashes and whatnot. And you kind of touched on it in the bonus section as far as, you know, the traffic engineer and the safety engineer. Concurring that there's a need, but is there any place for the public to identify potentially? New projects or things that haven't necessarily been addressed? And factoring that into the scoring, does that make any sense?
That's the whole portion, that's the whole idea of nominations of projects. They're identifying that need.
So Jonathan, we're trying to say that people can identify locations that don't have data. But we're not just going to go with any random location that somebody submits it. We have to run it through our traffic engineers, the traffic and safety engineers. And if they concur that they agree it's an area of no data, but it is an area of concern, then it'll get the one point. If the traffic engineers don't concur, then it won't get any points.
Okay, thank you.
And if we need to make that clear, I guess, we can, we can work on trying to say that, but to me, it was that, that, we'll see, we'll see what we can. Okay. So that, we talked about most of the corridor, the infrastructure corridor, the pedestrian side of things. The idea here is that making improvements for pedestrian users really does help break, because you can separate the conflicts that exist between the different modes. So people are like, well, why do you have bikes in here? Because they're related and they're important. You know, if you have a bike project that can come in and help reduce the conflict, it should. That's awesome. That's the ideal kind of project that we want to do. So I hope it makes sense what we're doing here for these projects. So any other questions on the truck-related safety issue? Yes.
So are you saying that you could get points in the bike path column of the?
No. There, it depends on the project. Roadway project, if the primary purpose is a roadway, it will do the infrastructure. If it gets, if it's like, oh, it will separate conflict, we have other criteria that can help with that as well. But.
But it would be a pathway along the highway, or a pathway along the truck group. The column, the right.
Wouldn't be the B column. I mean, it'd identify A and B or something, where they get people in the separate thing, to even only score it from one to all. Okay, we can, yeah, I was noticing that. I'm like, we are having a lot of problems with people getting that, so. We wanted to make sure that we were using one set of criterias, and we're trying to organize how it looks, so, thank you, maybe. Okay. Any other questions here? Okay. Sorry, I'm looking at the time and, oof. Okay, so bike, next one is bike safety. Pretty similar to the truck safety one. This is just for bike-related crashes. And again, we'll look at adding that bike into the crash information in there and see what we can do to make it a little clearer for people. So this one, again, it can score from the three, two, or zero, or the one, and. Get a bonus point depending on if it falls on a vision zero corridor. Yeah, any questions on that? Yes.
It's a little quibbling about semantics, but they mentioned serious injuries. How is serious defined or developed?
Um, we do.
Or, or crashes or serious injuries.
There is actually a definition.
It's okay, that's all I need to know.
So, just, you know, part of the performance measures that we have are actually fatalities and serious injuries, a reduction of those. And so those are spelled out in the federal regulations, so kind of what that.
I figured it was, but I wanted to ask.
Okay, maybe we can put, we'll see. Okay, it is spelled out. Yeah, so we'll be able to, and I believe, and Jim or anyone else heard that wrong, I believe we actually do designate. If it's a fatality or an injury, and then there might be designations at level of, because we have to track that data. So. Okay, any other questions about the bike safety one? So again, this is showing that a roadway project can make improvements to other modes, and it gets points for it. Because if it's a roadway project and it's making improvements to bike safety, it would go on the A column, and we'd get points for it if it's actually doing something to help address that safety concern.
Sorry, one more. Do you have a feedback on getting to the community is? Electric bicycles. And you may not be there yet, but where do they fit in the categories? I don't know, and I don't think anybody has determined this type is here, this type that's there, but. Is somebody working on including that in this?
Well, we don't really have it in our criteria, because it really. It's not really a concern in sort of who, are they using a regular bike or whatever, in that part. I believe, and this is something that's actually coming up at the CAC meeting later, the Alaska Administrative Code talks about what type of. Be, what you can use on pathways. So the limit in terms of electric or motorized vehicles on pathways. We have it here within our area. I believe you cannot use over a certain speed of a bike. Or motorcycle or anything like that on pathways or sidewalks or something like that. Fairbanks, our counter, our sister NPO here in the state, is working on trying to get. Changes into the code for their area that talks about the same things. And we're, you know, recommending a letter of support for that, but we'll see what the policy committee says.
The other thing coming up from the bicycle community is, is there a throttle? Or is it electric assist? So in other words, you have to be pedaling to get the electric energy, otherwise you've got, like a throttle, you don't have to be pedaling. And they're trying to delineate between those, one being kind of a motorcycle and the other one still being a bicycle.
Yeah, I don't know if the code actually designate.
Our code says.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I'm not up on the code for that. To me, it's not. I don't look at it as part of the criteria of, are they doing this? I just wanted to know, are people using the system, and if so, can we make improvements to help them? But I do know it is being addressed. It's being talked about elsewhere, so. Okay, any other questions on this one? Okay. Do we have any questions from the? Pedestrian safety? Again, I think it's important for us to call out pedestrian safety on its own. At some point, everyone is a pedestrian. Whether they're a freight truck driver, driving a box truck somewhere, delivering freight to people's homes, they are pedestrian when they get out of that truck and deliver that freight. Whether we're a person on maintenance duty for things. No, that's you are, sorry. Looking at you and, oh my God. Thank you. So I think, I think, you know, when we were going through this, we did notice that other NPOs were also calling specifically pedestrian safety. It's pretty common. I think it's important for us to do, and I just think it's a good way for us to be all-encompassing. Yes.
One comment that I. As part of the, let's say, the project, project contains one. Sometimes your project area might be here, but then it might affect. An adjacent area by adding that project, so I don't know if you could add or affects.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
We, it's interesting you say that, because later on, we do actually have a criteria that talks about making improvements to the national highway system. It's kind of our major routes throughout town. And we actually changed to say or adjacent NHS, so I wonder if we can do something similar here.
The latter area where the project itself, in its project area, might not affect, but it might affect the adjacent city, might just kind of browse through. Like would need the areas.
Yeah.
You know, that, that proves.
Yeah, I'll have to see. I don't think that should, I just want to make sure we're not promising something that isn't happening. But I do understand that if you make improvements in a location, it could have beneficial or detrimental impacts in the surrounding locations, and. How do we, how do we identify that? We do have that some for penalties later on. But we don't actually have anything in here about adjacent. Locations that are improved because of it.
That is pretty interesting, because if you build like, you build a roadway section, and it reduces traffic and issues on all the other roadways because of the plus traffic.
That's actually a really interesting point right there. I mean, that should count, you think that should have serious extra points right there when you have all these other benefits.
I want.
It also might increase patrol traffic.
Yeah, right.
Have to be at the time.
The mall.
You know, the only thing that would spring to my mind is how are we able to demonstrate the benefit that it provides to an area that's outside of the project? So I know people are listening online who hopefully aren't screaming at me, like, you're an idiot, but I would love to sit down with people, maybe Jim or others, and talk about, you know, how does that work? How do we, do we, do we have some method that we can show the benefits to areas outside of the project location? And how can we integrate that into our criteria in a way that is giving projects their due benefit that maybe?
I'm more worried about deficits. I mean, it could be both.
Yeah, and that's the hard thing, is coming up with a deficit is for the penalties, that's been so difficult for us, because. Some people have an idea, oh, yeah, this will be negative. I'm like, well, what data do you have to show that that would be a penalty? And so we were sparing in our penalties because we were concerned. The amount of work that it would take, and if that is actually achievable for us to be like, okay, how can you say this has a penalty, show us the data, blah, blah, blah. There's a lot that goes into it, so. But that does raise good, good questions, and. We'll see.
Yeah, just, I mean, think about it.
No, thank you.
Impacts outside of.
Oh, I think somebody has a question. Jonathan Lang?
Yes, you were talking about how to demonstrate that it'll impact other areas. Will the modeling show that?
Um, well, no.
Okay.
I mean, in a, in a way, yes, because. Hi, there's a comment, but your mouse isn't working for me because I'm.
Our modeling is pretty difficult because it doesn't really do a good job at identifying the non-motorized improvements.
Okay, great.
Regional model that's very specific to particular movements. We do incorporate non-motorized information in there about what load percentage. But when it comes down to, will this particular project make a benefit here? Our model is not fine-tuned enough for that, because we have to be a regional model.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
How is the model used? What is the effect of scoring in the model? What is the application for the two?
Well, generally, what we would do is we would look at if the project's in the model or not. We don't model projects if they are nominated for the tip, like we don't go back and update the modeling form and stuff.
You mentioned a comment of every project that you want to see needs a nomination. Would the modeling also cause a project with an automatic nomination?
So. Um, and it's like, oh, sorry, did you have?
I was just gonna say, your second criteria that you maybe you just mentioned it right there is so vague and loose. It seems like almost every project evacuations for alternative routes or diversion routes. You could almost classify any project right there that would meet that criteria. It seems like that's just a. I mean, doesn't it just sound like a free point? Isn't the whole point system to separate projects instead of getting almost? It seems like almost all projects get that points.
No, no. In fact, we should probably add to penalties here about negatively impacting emergency response time or emergency access routes. We probably should, but we, this was a last minute addition.
All right.
So that second one there is a response to a recent change that the Muni did where they are allowing uh funding for emergency routes outside of ARSA. Uh, so for example, the Mount Air Drive, that is an emergency response route. And so um it's recognizing that that is an area that has issue uh concerns. I believe there was an entire study done for the Eagle River, Chugak Eagle River area about emergency evacuation routes and emergency routes and stuff.
It's also used for area wide bonds too.
So um I can't speak to that unfortunately, it's not my. Her view. Um, and so it's recognizing that that is important for us to look at. Is there a way for us to help people get out of these locations that are pretty trapped? Cause I gotta be honest, if you actually look at plating done in Anchorage, there are some areas of that's weird that there's only one route in and out of a massive subdivision. So you know, it's trying to recognize that is this helping that that vulnerable population in a way that you know often kind of gets overlooked.
I really appreciate your scoring criteria that's tangible, very hard line.
I know. Some of it can't be unfortunately. We do, we originally saw our first go around, just so you guys know, our first go around, we did try to be hard lined about everything and realized we needed a little more flexibility built into our criteria. There may be things we're not thinking of. And it was just not allowing us to encompass, you know, the overall mo- overall system. So.
Okay, any other questions about safety? Any comments from public?
Thanks.
And I'm not ignoring the A P P comment, I'll send it to later. Cause we have criteria related to.
Excellent mobility. So. The name kind of says it, but this is helping projects to improve access to and accessibility of all modes. Supports roadway management and operation strategies to improve travel reliability, mitigates congestion and supports non-single occupant vehicle travel. So first one vehicular congestion reduction. Uh, it is something we have to account for. The Fed requires us to have a congestion management process. As a N P O of two hundred thousand or greater, we are T M A and transportation management area. Uh, we are required to have a C M P. And i- it's focus is congestion reduction. And vehiculars congestion is something we do have to talk about. And so originally we didn't have anything in there and we've had heard feedback from people, you shouldn't be looking at this. We have no congestion. Yes, if it compares to uh Los Angeles, we don't have congestion. However, however, if you compare us to ourselves, which we should be doing, we do have congestion in locations. So to put our head in the sand and say congestion doesn't exist is not really what we're supposed to be doing as an N P O per the federal regulation. Um, so we didn't want to give it a whole bunch of points, but we did want to acknowledge it is important because we have entire processes for it. So for example, we have T S M O, Transportation System Management Operation Strategic Implementation Plan, which uh I'll be the project manager on starting soon hopefully. It's looking at, it's a combination of the other one that you see there uh C M P. It's looking at ways to help manage the system with uh you know congestion strategies that may not necessarily involve a brand new road somewhere like what can we do to our existing infrastructure that can help with vehicular congestion reduction? Um, so when it says isn't identified strategy in the I T S or the C M P, those are actual plans we have A M A to do and are required to do. They're on our board, our thing, but I'll make sure to put a link um in there for them so people can find them. Sorry, C M P and I T S link. So uh there are actually strategies in these documents for helping with congestion reduction that don't involve things like vehicular. But they do have stuff in there for vehicular because it's an important thing for us to figure.
What's E J?
E J. Uh, environmental justice, so I'll get that. So um so bonus points. Here is kind of talking to what was mentioned earlier where it's expected to help reduce congestion on a nearby N H S route. We originally had something in here about will reduce congestion on a N H S route. But we recognize that not all of our projects are N H S facility. But we want to give projects point if they do help with our N H S route because it's one of the most important routes we have in this town. They help with so much traffic, freight and emergency response and everything. And it helps get traffic off of the side roads that can be used more for the non-motorized users. It provides benefit to everyone. And you know, D O T is an important partner of ours and it felt that we were ignoring them or not doing them enough justice if we didn't have something in here about the N H S route. It's not only is D O T responsible for N H S, but we as A M A have performance measures that relate to the N H S. And we need to make sure we're accommodating and helping those performance measures work. Um, we do have environmental justice in here. So as we were working on the tip criteria update, it was mentioned to us a couple of times that equity seems to be kind of a weak point that we have through a lot of this criteria. The idea that not everyone's equal, some people need a little more help than others to get to an equal standpoint. And so we were like, how can we add equity? What we're doing. Equity is such a difficult topic. We looked at other M P Os, they spent years working with their communities to come up with different criteria for equity and assigning it to projects and we don't have the time for that. So our best attempt is smattering E J throughout our different criteria. That is a project providing benefit to E J in these percentiles. Uh, these percentiles are designated by the EPA's uh environmental screening tool that they have online, which we do provide a link to. It's an awesome tool that you can go on and see the E J groups in our location. And then we have a penalty if they're going to be negatively impacting populations in there. And we do list some of the, I, you know, some of the negative impacts that could happen with a project.
Can you give an example of the high percentile, low percenta- percentile E J? I'm not tracking yet, but you're.
So it's basically saying, what is the density within a certain location? Is it sixty percent or greater of E J population? So it looks at like a tract, a section of property and says, what's the density of E J populations in there? Low income minority population. Um, and if it meets the threshold of sixty percent or greater, so if sixty percent or more of the people within that area are considered uh E J populations, it would fall within our criteria. So we say, is that project helping or negatively impacting those groups that are in there?
Would Chugak Eagle River?
Nope.
You knew where I was going with this?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, I believe that they, sorry.
No, you're good. No, you knew where I was going.
The EPA uh screen criteria, the, the EPA tool is very good for Anchorage, e- Anchorage area. Uh, there does not appear to be E J populations meeting our threshold in the Chugak Eagle River area.
So Aaron, that's one place uh that is located in an E J area for impact.
We actually originally did that inside of NOTU. We wanted to keep it more specific that it's located within. Because when you say impacting, it's a lot harder for us to come up with, what does that mean? What we wanted to do is um what we should have on the bonus is project is located within an E J or greater and positively or provides positive benefits to the population. Um, it just says it's located in and I know everyone's been like, well, what do you mean it's located? It doesn't necessarily help it. So I, I see we need to add apologies on that. Um, then the this is a hard one because we originally said, well, what if a project just gets close to an E J population and negatively or positively impacts it? That's every single project. Our E J populations in some way, shape or form are in almost every single inch of the Anchorage bowl. So it became harder for us to assign these points to projects that were actually going to have a benefit for those populations within that area. Because if every project is next to an E J population, it gets points. If every project provides benefit, it's harder for us to determine what that means. So we're still kind of, I'm sorry, I'm kind of jumbling here in my talk, but this is a really hard topic for us because we don't know. And I can guarantee you, most of the other M P Os in the country do not have a good answer for this either. How can you sit there and show what positive benefits you're going to be providing to E J populations? Our simple answer is things like uh N H S or uh uh non-motorized facilities, connections to transit, uh helping to reduce the amount of time it takes for them to get to strategic locations like the store or work or other things like that. Um, and that's where the C M P and the I T S kind of come in. They help a lot with that kind of stuff is helping with non-motorized improvements. I probably didn't answer your comment. Um, we can talk more about, should it say located next to? But to me, it's more impactful if it says it's located within because then it help us, helps us differentiate the projects that'll have the most amount of impact, positive or negative on those areas. Because we've got to have some kind of differentiation, so. But I will, thank you for pointing out um E J population benefits, not just location or bonus points. Yeah, we'll, we'll have, so we do have for the penalty negatively impact population, but we talked about what that means. So we, we do list some of the negative impacts.
That says located.
Yeah, we're gonna probably keep it located in, it's the same thing.
That all of a sudden makes it less traffic.
But it's the same as if it was a benefit. We're trying to focus on the ones that are having the largest impact by being located within the area versus just the ones that are on the outside of an area. Because a project's big enough to make that much of an impact, it'll probably be located within the E J population because we have so many E J populations. So I, I, well, we can talk about it, but I, it's been a discussion we had a few times. So uh if somebody has a good recommendation other than just next to, because that doesn't really solve it, would love to hear, uh, we just couldn't find a good example from other places without doing years of work to come up with a separate criteria just for that. So I will put a note. Looked at, how can we capture the benefit or penalty of a project adjacent? To E J population area. It would keep us consistent with some of our other criteria we're talking about adjacent to, so that may need more work.
I think it's strong enough. I'm talking about minor low level.
Yeah. A large, okay, really? That'd be hard, but we'll see. So any other questions on the vehicular congestion reduction? Any comments? Okay, thank you. Um, I do apologize, we're going a little slow, so I'm just trying to get up. Okay, improved truck movement. Um, again, is trying to recognize the effect of mobility for trucks is, is, is an important thing for us, for freight. Freight is vastly important for our entire economy and everything we do on a regular basis. So uh trucks should be in there. We do have um bonus points added in here about uh, so we do have freight designated corridors. Those are identified in our freight mobility study. We'll provide that link for everyone. Uh, in that freight mobility study, there is actually a map as well that identifies freight bottleneck locations. Uh, so you can see where those are. So that's information that's easy to find.
The thing you're negative then impacts, uh, you say uh negative economic mobility, visual and aesthetic, is that a good noise?
It could. I'll be honest, we didn't list everything because I didn't know everything. I just tried to get a good representation so people could be like, okay, we kind of understand what you mean. But that's part of the discussion we have when we score these projects are what are the negative impacts to E J populations? Uh, because it could differ from area, from location to location. We want to give ourselves some flexibility. Yep, okay, any?
Yes. So with uh your criteria right there, I've noticed that every criteria section has had different things that give her plus or minus points right here.
Uh huh.
But I noticed on your penalty, it's not the exact same penalty you just had the previous criteria with the minus four points.
Yep.
So if it meets that criteria, it's not really minus four points, it's minus eight.
Yep.
That seems okay.
It's, it's to show that providing negative impacts to E J areas is a serious problem.
So that's a way, that actually answers that question is you could have scoring criterias and multiple criterias to show the benefit of an item. So like uh traffic improvement right there, if you added that item in separate sections right there, you could give additional benefit instead of just one criteria item.
I mean, what we're trying to do is emphasize the fact of shame to look at all criteria because they're all equally important. But if you have comments about how you like to weight things differently, please provide them.
Thanks, sir.
Because it gives us something to respond to. So, okay, any other questions? I'm not trying to ignore your questions.
Oh, no, no, you.
Are you calling?
You got what I was saying.
A- any other questions or comments? Anything? So far, okay. Um. Okay, uh, bike, mobility for non-motorized users, so we have one for bike and pedestrian. Uh, this one has a lot to it just because there are a lot of different options that a roadway project could do. Um, you know, because we didn't want to say, oh, if you're adding a pathway, that's the only thing that could get you positive points as a roadway project. Uh, we, you know, we have on there physically separated bike facility um or buffered or standard. Some people will complain that we don't do a whole lot of the separated bicycle facilities. And I say, well, when we do do those, those should be some of the most important ones. So if people have a different idea to that and we should just make it generic and say, oh yeah, we're doing some kind of improvement here, it gives max points. I don't think that's in the spirit of the criteria we're trying to get here. Have a differentiation between the impacts that it'll have on people. Um. Yeah, any questions?
You have a negative, we have a penalty on the um corridor infrastructure for negatively affected transit movement or increased transit delays. But there's no corresponding penalty in the bicycle pedestrians.
I'm not, uh, is that one of the later criterias? Okay, I'll, I'll get to that in a sec.
Okay.
Uh, we're on the bicycle one. Any questions on the bicycle network?
I think he was saying, why don't you have a similar penalty in?
For what? Uh, the, the transit delay thing is an entirely separate criteria, so we're not at that criteria yet. So next we have the pedestrian and A D A accessibility. Those are hugely important for us. So uh, again, I think it's important uh to incorporate it in. Uh. Any questions? It's, I'm sorry, it's pretty similar to the bike one, so I don't know what to say about it, so. Okay, so then the next one, kind of a new one for us. Um, is the reduced transit vehicle delay. So in response to your question, can you give me a project that would reduce transit vehicle delay that is non-motorized?
That's a transit vehicle, it's a bicycle. Yes.
It's not.
Right, the thing with the.
Cause bicycles loading and unloading on the transit, I believe, is incorporated into their, their averages that they have there. So adding a bike doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be a huge delay.
About when they change the locations of the process. But the one that comes to mind in my area is Victor and Diamond. And the bike path coming out of there, they keep changing which way you cross and you can't cross in other directions.
That would more than likely be a roadway project, not a non-motorized project.
Um, could be, when they added the Fred Meyer gas station, all of a sudden that's free path that we had for the bike route was taken away because people whipping into and out of the gas station for Fred Meyer. So they changed the locations of where myself would cross. And it's gotten crazy, I almost got hit again the other day there, uh, because there aren't traffic standards there.
The Fred Meyer project wouldn't be one that we would have as part of our process, so that, that's kind of outside. An improvement to make that area better would be a project we'd have in there. Um, if somebody can find me a non-motorized project, uh, specifically, I, I I couldn't think of a single project that would provide benefit or negative to transit delays reduction uh that you would get from a road, the same equivalency that you would get from a roadway project. Because a roadway project has significant impact on positive or negative for transit delays.
If you added a bike path and you were able to take the bicycles off of the roadway and onto the bicycle path, wouldn't that produce transit vehicle delays?
I mean, not really, because the whole point that somebody is using like I, I don't know how I should say this, but isn't somebody using transit with their bike? You know, that's their intention is to get on the transit to go somewhere and adding a separate bike facility somewhere else wouldn't necessarily be like, you know what? I don't need to use that transit because I can take longer to get on this bike path to go somewhere.
And it's still the road.
I, I mean.
Yeah.
The thing in that particular location, if the fuel trucks coming in to deliver, it's the trucks coming in to deliver the stuff for the store and stuff. Um. The selection of where the pedestrian and the bicycles go impacts the transit of goods, goods into that location.
Uh, this is only, uh, this is not freight. This is only buses. When we say.
Which way bus?
When we say transit, we mean the transit system.
So the transit is only bus.
Yeah. Sorry, I guess, uh, we may need to put something in there about what we're talking about in there. But this is only uh the buses which you see, buses and other transit related. So it could be the uh uh chair ride and anchor rides and other things like that.
Can I ask about significant hours yet?
Well, uh, it's an actual, um, yes.
Okay, okay, that doesn't have to figure, it seems like such a big term. So do they define what significant hours is and what moderate hours is?
It's gonna be kind of up.
Yeah.
I can't give you an exact answer because it's still something we're trying to work out with transit. Uh, it, it does relate to federal performance measures about hours of delay and reduction. And so we want to make sure we're helping to accommodate that because it's an important thing to think about for our system.
So something say fifteen minutes of delay right there, would that qualifies the plus two project results as significant hours of passenger delay?
Uh, overtime, yes. I mean, because we're not looking at that one particular instance, we'd say it's a
Well, fine.
Yeah, i- it, we, we would be looking at kind of like an overtime thing possibly. Um, so it's not just a single day, single instance in this one location.
Okay.
You have a comment from James.
Yes, James.
Um, he said, an example of a non-motorized project that would nega- negatively impact transit times would be a signalized non-motorized crossing such as a light on Northern Lights between Burgal and U A A Drive. But do we want to penalize those types of improvement?
No, because I think that provides a benefit overall because it allows people to be able to cross. I actually just I'm gonna say that doesn't provide a delay because that enables people to cross at a better location that could get them to the transit stop faster. So when you factor all of that stuff in, so instead of having to go to a light, they're able to cross at a clo- a closer location. I don't really want to penalize those type of projects because that's a benefit for everyone in the system overall. I- it's a designated spot that people can cross, say bees. I can't use the S word because somebody will scream at me. Um, it's a designated spot that people can cross that could be better than if they were crossing further away that takes them longer to get to and from the transit locations. So I'm not interested in penalizing those types of projects. But if somebody would like to make a recommendation, uh, I would love to get some input on that and uh some justification. Because that'll be a hard sell to people.
Chugak High School, virtual, that interception right there, yeah.
So I mean, similar to E J populations, we also don't have negative points for non-motorized, this non-motorized projects for E J populations because it's been shown that making improvements for non-motorized facilities only benefits E J populations. So you'll see in there, why don't you have negatives here for these because they don't make a full impact by and large? And I'll also tell you, we here in Alaska uh don't tend to do condemnation or massive taking down of homes for a non-motorized project. So that is another consideration. So you won't see rows of houses being demolished for a pathway at this time. I don't know if that'll change with future administrations. I would be shocked if it did.
I could stay long, maybe in the eighty nine to eighty eight, didn't self anything.
Yes, uh, Jim, Jim recently had us, uh, explained this to us that uh we, they, that's not what the state does. Uh, and we're like, oh, that's perfect, that fits in, you know, that helps us, so thanks for letting us know. So, um, okay, any other questions on this one? And yes, we do comment down here, just so people know, we do list what negative impacts E J populations. And I do say can include, but not limited to barriers to mobility, negative economic impacts, negative aesthetics, the visual effects, relocation and displacement and negative impacts to land use. These will also be subject to M P O staff review and something like that. Okay, third one, economics. Economics is important. I hope everyone didn't play too much on why economics need to be in here. It is a thing that we have to look at for federal requirements and part of the national goals and planning factors. It's also part of our M T P goals. So uh, one of the things that we are tasked with doing as an F P O is making sure that we're integrating land use into our transportation process. We, we've always kind of done that, but it's been hard for people to see. And working with our amazing long range planning group here at the Muni um and the rest of the planning section uh to help integrate the updated twenty forty land use plan that happened not long ago. Because they did a lot of really good work in there that helps to identify locations of, you know, we want to focus on this area for transit routes or non-motorized routes and stuff like that. We want to be able to bring that into our tip criteria because it's very important. Because that's what the public sees as, okay, these are the next locations we're going to be focusing on. So the first criteria is bringing the special land use features. Um. Okay, so special land use growth features within the land use plan are not spelled out here, but they are spelled out in the plan. I'll probably have to put something in here of what those special features are, I apologize. Um, there was a lot to do, so I forgot, special land use features. Special land use features are uh greenway supportive development corridors, um transit supportive development. So uh routes that are going to be really heavily focused on transit, transit improvements, uh, anything like that being developed in a way to help with more non-motorized mobility, uh, helping with transit mobility, that kind of stuff. Um, and so what we want to do is identify that if it's helping with bicycle access, pedestrian access, transit access, it gets a bunch of points. Because if it meets all three, it gets max points. If it doesn't meet it, it doesn't get the point. Yes.
So Chugak Eagle River uh has very limited verbiage in the twenty forty plan. This is a major, so supporting features of the twenty forty land use plan. So automatically, couldn't Chugak Eagle River be significantly suffer by not having the, what's the supporting features defined in the twenty forty plan?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, that's huge. Thank you.
And we can add an offset in, but.
Yeah, some.
Chugak Eagle River doesn't have any spelled out land use plan stuff like this, so it's hard for us to put anything in there. I mean, what are we going to put in?
I have no clue, but it just seems like that was unfair. If we're part of the metropolitan group right there, then we'd be negatively impacted when equity is the big name of the game up here.
I mean, that's one of the things that maybe Chugak Eagle River should be looking at is how to handle their land use and should they be updating their information to be more aligned with current land use stuff that other people are doing? So I, I'm not trying to be rude here, I'm just saying that's the reality of the situation is we have an area that's done the work to update their land use plan and an area that that's their decision, but how do, what am I supposed to put in here for it? I agree, we probably should have put an offset in and I apologize for that.
Or, or something.
We could put an offset in, but
Oh, you could put an offset.
That's, that's for the land uses, I apologize. For the special land use features, we probably could put another offset in there, but it our initial thought was it shouldn't score as high as.
Six points.
Yeah.
Six, okay.
Probably would get three points uh for a special land use feature offset.
And that can make the difference for our projects, maybe on the tip or not, with an automatic six point reduction.
Yeah, I apologize for that, uh, spell out. Um, and then add in and Eagle River offset to the special features like the land use tier. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, so yeah, we can add something in for that. Um, because, yeah, I don't know why I didn't have that, God, I feel like an idiot. I was even thinking about it for the land use side of things, but I didn't even think of it for the special land use features. Um. And so, yeah, the next one we want to talk about is the land use features, similar to the special land use features. We just want to identify that there are certain land uses identified in the uh twenty forty land use plan that are key. We originally had stuff in here about every land use possible, but we decided we wanted to focus on specific ones that are really important to mobility, economics, other things like that, like a medical center, university, natural area or open space. Because economics isn't just the tangible money you see, but also, you know, your quality of life. So um, you know, if you're looking through here and you're like, why isn't this land use on there? We want to limit what land uses we show here, so it's not everything under the We wanna limit what land uses we show here, so it's not everything under the sun. Uh, but if there's a good reason to add a separate, another kind of land use on here, we can easily add it in. I think we've captured the pretty good ones. Um, and we do have an Eagle River offset for that one. So, uh, we'll, we'll add that in. And if the points for the Eagle River offset are not enough, please let us know. Um, but we.
But it is not subject to change right now. This is what's been presented for the sixty day comment period.
Yeah, I won't change it on the fly, but it'll be a recommendation. I, I'm taking notes. Uh, and it'll be one of those things that I'll be like, hey, by the way, at our meeting, you said this. You might wanna put a comment in there so we can add something on the record about it, but it gives me a heads up of what to look for. So, uh, you will not see a change right now. Just, just beware. Okay, any comments or questions on the special land use features of land use? Yes.
I just wanna add. Everything that we're giving. Like to go past. Land use. And so.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next ones. Um, so part of economics is also health equity. So this is a new one and, uh. I hope we're doing justice work. Throughout our public process, we've heard about health. And how is it that we in the transportation section are helping with health? You know, that's another quality of life then. It's like, how are you really helping with that? Our non-motorized plan that recently got approved actually has a section in there about health equity. So it focuses on certain, uh, vulnerable populations related to health, so heart problems, other things like that. We actually have data that shows it for Anchorage and Eagle River. And so we wanted to factor that into our plan because it's hugely important for us to talk about because of a project can demonstrate that it provides, in this case, transit improvements. Or non-motorized improvements. We'll have to kind of see a. We put transit improvements in here, but we should probably also have something in here for the complete streets about non-motorized improvements as well. Because if a roadway project is making non-motorized improvements that can help within a health equity focus area, it should provide benefit to that. Because putting in a sidewalk for people to walk by, do things is beneficial to the overall health. So I, I may have to, I may have to adjust that. I apologize. Uh, but for the bicycle and pedestrian projects, it's already a bicycle and pedestrian project, so we just said, is it providing transit improvements? Because that's another way for us to provide some benefit. Um, and if it's not helping with transit improvements, then the point of these projects are really focused in on the locations that are identified as part of the land use plan. That show these corridors that are transit oriented development and say, those are really where we should be focusing a lot of these projects on. Any questions on the health equity? It's a new one, so, um, I think I had a link or something in there. Or we don't have a link available because the non-motorized plan wasn't done at the time, but it should be available by the time, uh, we actually get the criteria ready. To where people can go and see what those health equity maps were like. So if they've already been reviewed, they're not new, they've, they've already been out there for people to see.
Aaron, uh, one thing to keep in mind too on bike heads.
Yes.
Bikes, that's, I mean, there's a, um, they cost money. But I agree, there's a lot more people out riding bikes because they don't feel like they have to be fit. You know, I think biking, it's just the summer time. They thought a lot more. And actually, uh, it's healthy. They, you know, the panel, panel.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a second. Okay, um, next one is another important of economics is freight. Uh, for our freight system. So, uh, the reason we don't have a non-motorized in there, uh, is because in our freight mobility study, we don't actually have projects that are non-motorized in the lit. So we left it out. Uh, but we wanna recognize that the freight mobility study identifies these key projects that are a benefit to the freight and economics. Cause often I think people forget that if you slow down freight, that has a dramatic effect on costs. You know, the products tend to be more expensive because it takes longer to get there, costs more overall to the freight carriers and they're not just gonna eat that cost. Um, so we wanna identify that there are key locations in our area that we should be focused on making improvements to freight. Um, and those tend to be the freight designated routes that are identified in our AMAS mobility study. Uh, those are always subject to change, of course, if people want to have, but that is a process that has to happen. That's not just something we do. Yeah, we're gonna change this to a route. It, it involves a process, so. Any questions on this economics section? Anything on the? Okay. Oh, sorry, everyone, I'm, I'm in trial. We got a plane scene left. Environment, environment's a key one. As we hear from Nancy Pease, we need to be doing more for greenhouse gas emissions, everything like that. It's hard for us with greenhouse gas emissions. Um, we are such a federally driven program that we take a lot of our direction from what the feds want. The feds currently do not have a good thing in there about climate change or greenhouse gas emission reduction, so we're kind of left to our own. Um, we need a lot of data for greenhouse gas emission information. Uh, the Anchorage Climate Action Plan is not an AMAS plan, but we tried to incorporate it in here either way because AMAS does not have a climate action plan. And we wanna recognize that the Anchorage Climate Action Plan is important, but it is very limited in what it says should be done for transportation. Sets a goal, sets a target, but it doesn't have a whole lot of information about what to do about it. So it's instead of us just diving headfirst in and saying, yep, we're gonna do this, this and this and this, and not actually being able to achieve it. We're trying to take a strategic approach to get a good basis going and get everyone on board and move forward with this is what we wanna go towards. So we do have some stuff in here about, uh, VMT reduction. Uh, we do have some air quality stuff, uh, and we have storm water. Uh, yes, is there a question?
Um, not a question, but Jonathan Lang said congestion reduction reduces greenhouse gases.
Thank you for somebody else pointing that out. In case anyone didn't hear, congestion reduction does help reduce greenhouse gas emission. Thank you. And, and that points out to my issue or my thing. You gotta look at these criteria as a holistic, integrated system. Because there are benefits that are being provided in other criteria to, you know, to each other. That is hard for us to identify every single thing that it does. So thank you, Jonathan, for pointing that out. Uh, okay, our first one is storm water runoff. This is a requirement that we have to do. Uh, so we need to incorporate it in here. This is a whole process that's been in place for, for a very long time. And so we wanna recognize projects that help us to meet this requirement. Uh, my understanding is these are typically only roadway projects that help us meet this requirement. I don't. I couldn't think of a non-motorized project that would help us. If somebody can and there, we should have a point in here, please let us know. That, that could be a comment. Hey, yeah, you know, projects that are non-motorized can really help with the storm water runoff. Uh, uh, compliance that we have to have, the MS four and NPDES permits. I'll try and remember to put those acronyms in, um, so people know. So any questions on the storm water one? It's, it's something we do. It's important. Air quality. Air quality is another really, really, really important thing that we have to do as AMAS. Um, it's part of our federal requirements from EPA and FHWA to make sure that we're not making air quality worse for the pollutants. CO, PM two point five and PM ten. So one of the things we're trying to include in here is within our health equity focus areas, so the areas I talked about earlier that are, you know. Heart or lung related areas that have issues, are we making air quality worse? Cause to us, those are really the, the vulnerable populations, like you're saying, those are really areas that we should be working on. Are we making air quality worse or better? And also, uh, right, let me throw it out. So we do talk about, uh, air quality, helping to improve air quality. Examples of ways to help air quality, provide alternative trans- uh, travel options such as bicycle or pedestrian transportation infrastructure, reduces travel distance between key destination. So. You know, if it takes less time for people to drive from location to the next, that can help with air quality overall. Cause it helps reduce the greenhouse gas emissions from those views. So that, those things I've read off is not an all encompassing list of how that can help air quality. Things like dust, helping with dust production helps with air quality. Um, so it's gonna be kinda, you know, staff will work on if a project is nominated and says, we're helping to reduce air quality because of this. And they make a good case, we'll say, sounds reasonable. If they're like, we're helping to do this because we're gonna eliminate blah, 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 and it sounds a little, we'll have to look into it more to see what's going on. Yes.
So Chugiak Eagle River pushed to be separated out of the municipal service storm sewer system right there. Based, I thought when we created this new, uh, group, would we be able to score on the storm water runoff?
I did not know that. Um, I guess I'll have to look into that and find out.
Amendment to be excluded.
Um.
We're not part of it. Yeah, it'd be just something to find out.
Okay, so we'll have to find an Eagle River equivalent.
Yes.
Uh, that we can put in there for an equal number of points that will be, if it's an Eagle River and meets whatever their system is called. So I, thank you very much. Uh, just a second. Uh, storm water river not part of the. Okay, I'll have to look into that and find out the exact. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, uh, any questions on air quality? We, we did wanna also say that the penalty we say here, the reason the roadway has a penalty and the non-motorized doesn't. I can't think of a single instance where a pedestrian or non-motorized project in an EJ area would worsen air quality. In fact, non-motorized projects are often an example of things to help improve air quality. So I didn't wanna put it in. So. Okay. On VMT. So, uh, we did hear from Nancy Pease about we should have a VMT related thing. I don't know if this meets her, uh, comments or not, but we do have a thing in here about if it reduces system line VMT, which we look at for our modeling. Cause our modeling does actually produce VMT results and we'll be able to show, okay, this project's part of our model that shows a VMT reduction over time. It's, it's good enough for us. Uh, we can also make good assumptions on our part as staff of if it helps to reduce or increase VMT. We do wanna penalize projects that are expected to increase system line VMT because our goal is to help reduce it overall. Um, if you actually look at our twenty forty NTP, we see a reduction from the no build scenario to the built scenario, pretty good reduction of VMT overall. Um, and if it doesn't reduce VMT, blah. Uh, as you'll see, non-motorized projects only help reduce VMT. That's an assumption we're making. If somebody has something they would like to, you know, disagree with that, I would love to hear it. So we can have a discussion on how non-motorized projects increase VMT. So, any questions? And again, VMT reduction does help with things like greenhouse gas emissions production. Yes.
Like the, um. There, there isn't a lot of description of the. And the action plan. And I wonder, like you mentioned earlier, the AMAS transportation. And it operates. Basically plan, I mean, seems like something like that could reduce VMT, but it's not. So, so there's that. It's something that's mentioned in.
Not really.
E block or?
Because, well, I mean, we could probably put it in that, like, if it's a project from there that identifies a VMT reduction, we, we can list it out. But it's being scored in another one because we wanna draw the importance to that particular thing, but it serves a dual purpose and I don't wanna double score it.
But it just might remind people. I mean, like, there's this small one sentence. You go home, like, you know. So, okay, four points, you know. I just think if you build it out a little, it might be. Understandable or. Like. I don't know. See what I'm, where I'm going.
Yeah, but I don't really wanna double count it, like.
Well, it's not that I'm counting because it is, it would be, you know, if you're the same, for example.
Oh, you just want it as an example?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you wanted it in here as a.
I thought you did too.
Okay, but yeah, we could easily put it in. Yeah.
He gave a couple examples of, of.
Okay.
Of doing that. I think it will, uh, run.
For VMT and your climate action. Yeah, yeah, no, thank you very much. Uh, the climate action plan, like I said, is pretty, is pretty lonely because there's not a whole lot in there for us for transportation. So people are putting basically everything on AMAS to solve every problem of the sun without actually helping. In any way in terms of funding or providing guidance on what kind of projects those look like. So we're doing our best. I think these criteria do a fantastic job of helping with that, especially our focus on more non-motorized transit related. Uh, improvements as we're doing things. Uh, but there's a lot of other stuff that needs to be done. Land use changes, policy changes, that kind of stuff. So it's not just us alone doing it. So. Okay, thank you for that. I'll, I'll see if I can add some kind of examples on there. Um, environmental impacts, this is a pretty standard thing that we have to do anyways as part of the process, so we just wanna call it out a little sooner. Are there gonna be massive right of way impacts, historical wetland property? The project should be a little more upfront about it. There's anticipated impacts of wetlands because we are experiencing projects now that went forward. No, it won't be that bad, but it's a lot worse and should have been caught sooner on our end. And so we wanna make sure that we capture it quicker. Any questions about the environmental impact? Preservation, really quickly. Okay, preservation, uh, is a pretty simple one. The goal here is to make sure that we can work on keeping our system in good working order. So the first one we have is improved roadway pavement condition. Um, you'll see it's poor to good, good, or poor to fair, or it doesn't include. Uh, those poor to good things are based on actual criteria that we, that the state has as part of the federal requirements for performance measures. So it's spelled out what good, fair, poor is. So we're just kinda following along with what that is. So we'll be looking, working with the state to say, and the muni. Um, the state has a lot of data. The muni, a little different on how they do it, but as we stay in the note here, we'll be working with the different groups to say. Is this considered a movement from good to fair, or you know, from fair to good or poor to good? Like, we're gonna use their expertise to help us with this. So this one's kind of a data, but also other driven. Um, any questions on this one? Okay, sidewalks. It's, it's another thing. We just, we wanna make sure we're encompassing all of our transportation system. Uh, similar to the, uh, roadway, we have good, fair, poor. Um. I probably shouldn't spell it out like the other one up there. Ah, such a mess. Okay. Um, I will, I will put a note in there that we should probably say this project improves existing sidewalk or off street facility from poor to good. From fair to, uh, from poor to fair or whatever. We'll, we'll put something in there, so I apologize for that. I did wanna make sure, we do have a note in there that this criteria does not apply to new facilities. We do often have facilities come in and people say, how do we score this on pavement? It's new pavement. It's not part of our existing system, so we won't, it won't receive a score of them. So, um. Who's sidewalk under preservation? Like roadway. Okay. See, that's why I like going through this. That's all the down there is for me. Okay, uh, one thing here, a couple things, improved traffic signal equipment. We really wanna recognize the fact that there are a lot of other things besides just pavement on our system that we need to maintain. The lights, utilities, uh, well, the utilities is the next one, sorry. But, uh, we put examples. Signals, guardrails, signage, pavement markings or lighting. Those are the biggest things that we encounter that sometimes get missed when we do projects. And, uh, you know, really change, for example, fireweed lane rehabilitation that we have in the plan. It was not talked about the first go around about the signals needing, um, some improvements. Um, and so when it came around and said, we were gonna have to make some improvements to the signals, that drove the cost up pretty significantly. And that should have been something we caught the first go around. So we wanna make a criteria out of and say, are there improvements that we need to make in the area for these other things? Uh, if there are not anything, it won't get any points. We just didn't need to put in, we figured we didn't need to put in a zero point. Any questions on the traffic signal equipment?
I, I don't imagine that's not specifically, so sometimes traffic lights automatically. Sometimes that's everybody. And it's really frustrating as a blocker or a cyclist. I just walked out the right lane, but I can't walk people. I wasn't there to stop. So is it some, now when you put signals in or standardizing? Then come up under, uh, how does, how does? How, how we. how, how we, the traffic department handle that?
I don't really have the ability to answer that because I, I'm not the traffic signal room. A lot of it probably comes down to cost, maintenance, what's available, updating our system because a lot of stuff has been put in years ago. I don't know if anyone is online right now who has the ability to help answer what that is, you know, help answer that.
Could be a good one on the bike heads, I mean, to update to automatic signals.
I know that in terms of traffic lights changing for bikers on roads, there's a big, big thing they're working on about radar protection or other detection for that.
Yeah, I mean, that's the kind of thing.
That, that is, I don't really want to, I don't really want to tie projects to that because that is outside of our wheelhouse. We don't have any ability to influence that in any way, shape, or form, and it's not up to us to decide.
We might want to encourage it.
We can't because no one wants to maintain it, and we don't know what the actual best solution is. So I don't want to sit there and say, yeah, this project will, when nobody's actually had a good discussion with the, you know, the NDOT in terms of what signals and stuff like, we should be using. Now, in terms of the sidewalk side of things, I think that's a little different. But I know it also falls into maintenance and used to be.
Well, if it's an automatic, then you don't have a button.
But it tends to get more expensive, and we look for project savings where possible.
That's it. Someone's trying to cross the street when they shouldn't because
I can't solve everything. But that is a good thing that we can see if we can get some information on in terms of what is the criteria used for helping with things like automatic crossing of sidewalks and, or the crosswalks, what is, what is automatic? And I, I know there's been so much discussion about should there be noise detection for people who are visually impaired and other things like that. But I, I, I'm not an expert on it, unfortunately. So I can make a note.
And I will read one more comment that we received in the chat. Back to, I think in response to the previous comment, but from Nancy Pease, it says, congestion reduction also induces even more driving trips with a net growth in greenhouse gases. More lanes and signals do not solve congestion. That's a demonstrated statistical fact over the last few decades in dozens of urban areas.
Okay, thank you. Utility coordination. One thing we want to be very clear of here is traffic signal equipment is important, but so is utility coordination. There are a lot of locations where we have utilities that, you know, could be buried underground or maybe impacted by these projects. We want to be very clear here that when we're talking about these projects, we're doing a lot of coordination. Because is there, is there an ability for projects to help improve utility? They should get a little bit of extra benefit versus projects that don't because it's making the overall system better for everything. So underground, like power lines, so they're not in the middle of the sidewalk. That's a huge benefit to a lot of people. So but if people don't think it's fair that we do that, we would like to hear from people. Any questions on this one? Okay. Last two, and then I'll stop, I promise. Okay, resiliency. One of the things we do need to factor in is the resiliency of our transportation system. So that's from climate change, natural disasters, et cetera. So the muti has an all-hazards mitigation plan. I actually still have to look at that and see when that was last updated because that may be a little dated, and it, it may be an issue for us. So that may be subject to change, just so you know. But we do need to talk about things like retrofitting of culverts, drainage systems, and then can they implement nature-based solutions? Try it out and see how it goes, see what people think. If people don't like it, then we can have that discussion. But we, we thought in the naple that other areas are doing. I know that DOT works very hard to incorporate some of these things where possible. So I think points for DOT and the muti, sorry, the muti does it as well. I, I didn't mean to just signal out one. They both work very hard to implement these where possible. And I think they should be acknowledged. Any questions about the resiliency? And so in case anyone has questions, resiliency also considers things like secondary access routes. For example, on the Glen Highway, we have frontage roads that be considered resiliency because it helps with in case there's an actual disaster, earthquake, and maybe divert traffic around or an incident or accident. We didn't put that in because those types of projects tend to be too big and expansive for what we can afford as part of our program. We do have secondary access, which also helps with the resiliency of the system, but that was covered under emergency access and stuff like that. So we didn't really want to double count it, but as you can see, there's dual purposes going on for criteria. Last one, improving transit. I love having transit in our criteria because I think it's important. We've heard endlessly from the public that transit needs to be more important or more funded and other things like that. We're pretty limited in what we can do. This is one thing we can do, improving transit stops. It may not sound like a lot, but it can provide a huge benefit if we do things like moving the transit stop from the middle of somewhere to closer to the intersection or wherever it may be. So it's easier for people to cross and get to those transit stops fast. And so we want to acknowledge projects that make those, you know, they may seem small, but they're really compounding and impactful over time. It's not a lot of points. I'm sorry, but we ran out of points possible because we wanted to keep them equal. So if we want to see different points, then just let us know.
So one of those would be like a bump out?
We do list what the transporting infrastructures are. Boarding pads, shelters, benches, lights, bus stops, on-street bus stops and stuff. We don't list everything possible, and we work very closely with the transit department. It might be one of those bump outs. But it, it could be a variety. Yeah. And so, you know, it's, it's, we have a good balance thing. Yeah. We have a lot we have to hit count for. So, okay. I am sorry it went a little over, but it was a very good discussion. Thank you all for being here. Do you guys have any follow-ups? Okay, thank you for everyone who's on the phone for listening, those who stuck around. It was a lot, but I'm very excited to meet with you guys again and see if you have any other questions or what your comments will be. The notes I've taken are pretty good, and I look forward to see what you guys submit.
So if you want to set up a segment, you were going to have a meeting set up.
Oh.
Actually, I was going to wait in the meeting to talk with you. Can we use Survey Monkey or something to find out some potential times, probably the center side? And also, we need to figure out a deadline of when any committee members that, remember how we did this last one? We talked about bringing the comments, recommendations that we want forward. And then each person is going to go through their amendments, recommendations, and we will vote them down or not. But we need a deadline to have those submitted in advance so that we can review, again, and create more of a better discussion, you know, review what individuals' comments are. We talked about a week. Is that what we mentioned? And we wanted a minimal time of a week before the meeting with you.
Yeah, it'd probably be a good idea because we need to make sure they get them to staff so the staff can organize them and look at them and then have the ability to respond to them. So a week before the meeting would be a minimum that we would
And then plus at least one week of even formulating questions. So I would say three weeks out. Is that going to, September?
20th.
You said? So we are at August 11th or?
We could do that. Okay, so.
It's a 12 today.
So if you do three weeks out from today, that would be August 2nd, or September 2nd. That would be a Thursday.
Can you create some possible dates that we can do?
Around that day.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And, yeah, you guys can go, you need to, just so people on the phone know, the CSE members are going to get back together and have another meeting to discuss comments and which ones they want to actually submit formally. So that's what we're discussing. So. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. We'll talk to you guys later.
Way better job on your presentation.